Thank you. It's five o'clock and this is the Planning Board's special meeting on Wednesday, June 12, 2024, 5:00 p.m. It's not on the agenda, but we typically start with a salute to the flag. So I think I'm gonna ask that we all stand and salute the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, and thanks for being here on a beautiful spring late afternoon. It's been, it's a little cool in here. I know Nada is in charge of the AC. Thank you, Nada. It will go on and go off as things, things get cooler or warmer, but at the moment feels pretty good. This is a, this is a public hearing today. Oh, look, John Ellsworth. This is a public hearing for, we're focusing on 11 Bridge, 7 and 11 Bridge. And let me just introduce the people who are here. So all you out there, I know you don't all know who's here. We have a full complement. We have a full board tonight. Nat is not here, so Drew Harvey is sitting in. He's an alternate now and he's performing as a full member tonight. Myself, John Shaka, Ron Reed, Larry Preid, and Granya is here. And Barbara Snyder is a stenographer, so she's up there. So I'm pointing her out particularly because I want you to know that this is being recorded, transcribed, and is also being recorded on Zoom, I believe, or video recording. So, so this, there will be a record of all of this, and I just want everyone to know that. John Ellsworth is here from Nelson Pope and Voorhees. He's a specialist, or he's very good, and really very good at secret work. So he's gonna be working, he has been working with us on the secret issues, and he'll be, he'll be doing a lot of work with us tonight and walking us through a lot of the issues. Liz Vale, of course, is here, and Doris, as always. So.
Kathy Eismann is.
Kathy Eismann's on the phone, I guess, or on Zoom. She's in attendance virtually. This is a public hearing, I believe. So do we need to open the public hearing at the get-go? Okay.
Motion to open the public scoping session.
I would accept a motion to open the public scoping session, please.
A mode.
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
That's unanimous, so it is now an open public meeting. Sorry.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I was gonna introduce it for you.
Good, yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna ask John Ellsworth to go ahead and walk us through the ideas of what we're doing here today.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is a special meeting of the Planning Board, which is being held for the specific purpose of conducting a public scoping session for the application of 11 Bridge Street LLC. The application involves a proposal to demolish all existing structures on approximately 0.95 acre property located at 7 and 11 Bridge Street. The property currently includes a commercial building, dozens of meter, and residence. And upon the completion of demolition, the proposal was to construct a three-story, 61,292-foot-square-foot mixed-use building. The proposed project site is located on the east side of Bridge Street, approximately 110 feet north of Rose Street. It's located in the Village's office district and also in the waterfront historic and tidal flood hazard overlay district. The proposed new building includes 7,935 square feet of commercial space and 44 parking spaces at gray level and 44 residential apartments on the second and third floors. That includes 16 one-bedroom affordable units and 28 two-bedroom apartment units. The applicant has submitted a site plan application to the Planning Board. In addition, two special exception approvals from the Planning Board are required for an apartment building in the office district and a structure greater than 3,500 square feet in the waterfront overlay district. The proposed project requires four variances from the Village zoning board of appeals for maximum residential density. 28 units are proposed and five are permitted. Maximum number of stories, three stories are proposed, two stories are permitted. Minimum rear yard, 18.5 feet are proposed, 40 feet are required. And lastly, parking, 125 onsite parking stalls are required. 44 onsite parking stalls are proposed with an additional 93 offsite parking stalls on the adjoining property in 5 Bridge Street. Now, I'll discuss why we're here this evening. This meeting is a very early step in the State's Environmental Quality Review Act, or SECPRA, SDQRA process, which will include additional opportunities for public participation before a decision is made on the application. The Planning Board is the lead agency for this application under SECPRA. That means that the Board will oversee this review process for the application and evaluate the project's impacts on the environment and the measures that have been identified to mitigate these impacts. The SECPRA process has to be completed before the Planning Board or any other agency is able to make their decision on the application. On April 23rd of this year, the Planning Board adopted a formal positive declaration, which is a determination that the proposed project entails the potential for significant environmental impacts and requires a preparation of an environmental impact statement, or EIS, to comprehensively analyze these potential impacts. Prior to the preparation of the EIS, it is required that a public scoping process be conducted, that's what this is part of, to determine what information should be included in the EIS. The EIS itself is a two-step process. First, there's a draft EIS or DEIS, which will be prepared by the applicant after this scoping process is through going through. Then down the road, after the DEIS has been completed and it goes out for public review and comments come back on the DEIS, a final EIS or FEIS will be prepared by the village. That's the village document, the DEIS is the applicant's document. This meeting is being held by the Planning Board to receive comments on the draft scope, which was prepared by the applicant. The draft scope contains the applicant's proposed outline for the DEIS, which the applicant will also be preparing the DEIS. There's, as mentioned previously, there's a stenographer who will create a transcript of the meeting tonight, which can be put into the public record. The draft scope has been posted on Planning Board's link on the Village website, and paper copies of the draft scope are available at the Village Clerk's office and at the library, and some are available today, I'm sorry. The Planning Board will revise the draft scope based on the input received at this meeting and in writing before the end of the public comment period. And you can submit written comments through Friday, June 21st. The resulting final scope, prepared by the village, will define the required content of the applicant's DEIS. So if the applicant submitted a draft scope, that's their proposed outline. After this process, the village will finalize the scope and that will determine what has to go in the DEIS. We're not looking to answer questions or resolve any issues at this time. That will come later, after the applicant has completed the DEIS, which will include detailed maps, figures, tables, technical analysis, a bunch of other stuff to fully describe the proposed project, its anticipated impacts, the measures which the applicant is proposing to mitigate these impacts, and alternatives to the proposed development plan. Again, the purpose of this meeting is to identify revisions that should be made to the draft scope, to the outline. We're not gonna get into detail on the analyses themselves that should be included in the DEIS. Now I'll discuss how this meeting fits into the overall review process for the application. After today, the environmental review process will involve the following steps, some of which I've already mentioned, but I'll just go through them, I think they will be helpful to the whole process. As mentioned previously, a transcript will be prepared to memorialize the input received at today's meeting. Second, comments on the draft scope will be accepted in writing by Casalveras, the clerk of the Planning Board. Again, the end date for written comments is Friday, June 21st. The scoping, the third step in this process, the scoping document will be finalized by the Planning Board based on the input received at today's session and in writing before the end of the comment period. The final scope will be adopted by the Planning Board and made available in the same manner as the draft scope. Again, the final scope will define what is required to be included into the DEIS. After the final scope is issued, the applicant will prepare the DEIS and submit it to the Planning Board. The Planning Board and its consultants will review the submitted DEIS for completeness based on the outline contained in the final scope and other applicable requirements of the evaluation. Seventh, the DEIS received from the applicant will have to be revised to address any comments from the village. And ultimately, once all of the comments have been addressed, the Planning Board will adopt a resolution determining that the DEIS is complete for the purpose of commencing the public review. At that point, the, the Planning Board is not making any decisions. They're just making a determination that the DEIS has enough information on it to send out to the public. After the Planning Board accepts that the DEIS is complete, it will be circulated for public review in a similar manner as applied to the draft scope. During public review, the DEIS will be subject to a public hearing by the Planning Board. There will also be a period after the hearing in which comments, written comments, will be received, similar to what's occurring with the draft scope. A final EIS, a final EIS or FEIS will be prepared to address the comments received during the public review of the DEIS. The FEIS, once adopted by the Planning Board, now, we're talking months down the road at this point in the process, will be circulated in the same manner as will apply to the DEIS. And then the eleventh and final step in the SECPRA process is the Planning Board's adoption of a finding statement, which presents the Board's environmental conclusions regarding the project based on the information in the DEIS and FEIS. The finding statement will provide a primary basis for the Board's ultimate decision on whether to approve the application. Further notices will be issued to keep you informed of future steps in the review process for this application, including the availability of the DEIS for public review and the scheduling of the public hearing on the DEIS. At this point, I would ask Mr. Chairman if the Board has any questions.
Anyone, anyone have questions about anything that, that John just said? In terms of laying out or any other things, what the purpose is today?
It's incredible.
Yeah, yeah, good, thank you. That's good.
And then the next step is typically the opportunity is offered for the applicant if they wanna say something before we open it up.
Absolutely, absolutely. Nothing, they're good. Okay, they both said no. So then we can open up for public comment. And I will say that we have a limit of three minutes per person. If, if there's something extraordinary, we can, we can allow it to go over. But please keep it succinct. And if you have a lot of information you need to share, please put it in writing and submit it. You have until the 21st of, of June. And that'd be the preferred way to get a lot of information across to us. But you, we welcome all comments today, both in person and on, on Zoom. Sir.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Jeff Bradden. I represent, Sad Harbor. I asked for a little indulgence beyond three minutes. I've got a lot of material, but I'll try to speed them through if I may.
Okay.
Sad Harbor is a volunteer civic organization, you know it well. We're concerned about the depth to groundwater being as shallow as it is. And that is consistent with the fact that the land was previously landfill. And it's very close to the critical environmental area of the bay and the shoreline, within 200 or 300 feet. And so we're concerned about the process of de-watering that may occur on, on the site. And we would ask that the applicant include in the, some specifics about the de-watering process and in the scoping as it becomes amended. We also think that the applicant should provide a baseline identification for any contaminants of concern. A Phase 1 study that they conducted fairly recently indicated the presence of some contaminants of concern, including cyanide and some others that I don't wanna take the time to try to pronounce. But there's also an indication from their own Phase 1 and earlier, the earlier management plan that there may be volatile organic chemicals in the, in the soil. And that's partly because when the site was remediated, when 5 Bridge Street was remediated, they took out 15 feet of soils and then they hit a peat layer. When they hit the peat layer, it's connected to the aquifer beneath it, and they stopped, basically. So they did, they did not complete the remediation. So there is subsurface contaminants that may emerge. And they should also have some notation about vapor, prevention of vapors that may come from, it can be airborne, it can be in the soil, or it can be in the water. Stormwater runoff and containment should also be depicted, showing existing conditions. And the sanitary, the potential impacts on wastewater, the Sad Harbor sanitary system that's in place. It's interesting because the permitted flow, if this was not going into your public facility, is very low. In a zone, for it'd be like 570 gallons per day. The proposed effluent output here is 11,257 gallons a day, which is like 20 times greater than would otherwise be permitted. And that doesn't take into account of water that would be used for, for fire suppression. That's something that should be included in the next scoping revision, if there is one. We'd like to see them quantify the added runoff that'll come from anticipated hardscape that they're gonna add to the property. As you know, it's in the flood at 140 years of the plane. We'd also like to see them use a five-inch rainfall instead of the usual three-inch rainfall because rainfall is becoming heavier with global warming. We'd like to see them put in a history of nearby flooding in the parking lot. As you may recall, a week before we filed the last lawsuit, the parking lot was flooded with, I think, about at least two feet of water, maybe more. We think there should be a topic on sea level rise because they are smack in the target area for sea level rise. There was just an article in Newsday this week indicating that the range of increase is 13 to 25 inches, which would inundate the site. We think you should see a study. I'd also like to suggest that the Planning Board directly contact the D E C and find the point person delegated from the Commissioner's Office who's handling the current ground field application to make sure that you understand that application and particularly the effect of the prior cleanup on the Superfund site. I'm gonna say a little bit more throughout the minute. On the affordable housing, we think there should be some kind of operational plan showing financing, construction, construction and management that's anticipated. New York State, typically in New York State, affordable housing is funded from tax credits, which the state has created as an incentive to get banks to be engaged in the communities where they sit. I know I just said a mouthful there. But they set up, they give, to put it simply, the state gives tax credits to developers for affordable housing, which then create a market in banks, and they can sell them to the companies that need tax credits. This applicant hasn't explained how he's gonna finance his so-called affordable housing and whether it will be sustainable. So you need more information on how it's capitalized, what his occupancy expectations are, who's gonna live there. But most importantly, how is he gonna make this work financially? Because he's not, apparently not taking advantage of the usual structure for, for affordable housing. I think that there should be some discussion in this, as a scoping topic, of the site management plan from the coal tar remediation that was done because this property was a part of that remediation. 11, 11 Bridge was included as a part of it. The owner remains completely responsible, it's called completely responsible, for the safe performance of any requirements from that prior site management plan. So we think there should be some detail about that site management plan and about the perpetual easement that burdens this property, that was put onto the property, which seems to prohibit housing. But there may be a contradiction between that and the site management plan, which the applicant can work out. And it's very important, I think, that the Planning Board get direct communication with whomever is the point person at the D E C because as an involved agency, they have a responsibility to provide you with any relevant information that you may need. And I also may suggest to you the possibility that if you need help in evaluating some of the technical problems or issues in the D E C materials, you can obtain consultants to help you at the expense of the applicant. It's something you should consider because I think this is a case where the D E C's prior work is gonna come in and influence your decision-making, and you should know about it. We are, we don't wanna see a new application, which apparently is being made, segment out what happened before. You have to consider this as a lead agency, the totality of what went before. Parking, you know, the numbers have changed a little bit. I don't know if you noticed that. On the notice that you've read today, it was a little, it's a little different from what we had. The parking spaces went down. I know the, the number of units got shuffled a little bit. But one thing I think should be dealt with, it may be as an aesthetic impact, a growth-inducing impact and a precedential impact, is the fact that they've got first-floor parking. The reason that they're doing it, in case it isn't clear, is they can't, this site is too small for the number of units they want when you put the number of parking spaces that are required for the units and for the commercial space. That's typical in all applications in front of boards, that it's the parking and the septic system usually that constrain the site. Look, here, their, their answer to that isn't to look at, look at what they're asking for. Instead, they wanna push up. They wanna sort of a New York City kind of solution. Like, if we can't get, can't fit it in on the first two floors, which is permitted, well, let's just build a third floor. So the ground floor parking sets a precedent. It has an aesthetic impact and it has a growth-inducing impact that we think you should look at. Included in the aesthetic impacts, we should, we think you should have the history of the house on 11 Bridge Street because it is a contributing property or eligible. And I'd like to see what mitigation they propose. What can, how can they mitigate tearing down that building? Regarding architecture, similar to the architecture on Main Street. Of course, the danger is that the overriding planning concern over the past few years in Sad Harbor has been to maintain a vibrant Main Street. And the way to do that is to not dilute it or direct traffic elsewhere. And I would say that that, you know, the growth-inducing aspect of creating something that looks like another Main Street is a danger that you have to be aware of. And let's have the applicant address that. I'm a little concerned about whether they can fill the site with service and commercial uses in that. Now, I guess now it's about 8,000 square feet, if the numbers, if I have the latest numbers, they seem to change a little bit. And there, we might like to see it as some kind of financial plan that they have in mind. Or, you know, perhaps, I don't think perhaps, I think they should list whatever service, commercial uses they think they can put in there and discuss the economic viability because we're, we don't wanna see an overbuilt building that winds up vacant because it can't be filled, so that the applicant has to re-approach the Planning Board and say, oh, we made a mistake, so now we want retail. I don't think anyone wants retail, and that's the danger. So there are some irretrievable impacts, growth-inducing impacts, thank you, but it impacts. And that is my speed reading.
It's pretty well done, I'd say.
Some issues that we should consider. So I thank you for your time, and if it went over.
And Jeff, will you be submitting a letter as well, or?
Yes, I'll follow up with a letter so that you don't have to follow my staccato delivery.
Thank you very much.
I can be calmer, but under the time, I don't think you'd want to.
I appreciate, I appreciate your, your, I appreciate your, your speed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak? Neela. And Neela, you introduce yourself.
Yes, my name is Neela Oza. I'm an architect. I live in Sad Harbor, not the village, but.
You're gonna share something on the video, is that what I understand?
Yeah. To first find the connection. Soon, I'll be in the clock. All right. If you just let me in. Okay. All right.
Very good.
Okay. Again, my name is Neela Oza. I'm, I'm an architect. I live in Sad Harbor and have a practice in Bridgehampton. Over the past year, I have worked with and learned alongside some young people from the Young Environmental Society at SOFO to the Teen Arts Council at Guildhall. These were open-ended studies to understand the chronic flooding we see in the backyard parking lot in Sad Harbor. About a month ago, our work was selected to be presented at the Long Island Sound Research Conference. One of the conference teams was compound flooding hazard across Long Island and Long Island Sound, analyzing the convergence of heavy rainfall, storm surge, and groundwater. One of the realizations of the backyard project is that this area, from Long Island Avenue to the north, down to Spring Street to the south, sits at the convergence of precisely these three conditions, high groundwater, heavy rainfall, and storm surge. And here's why. Let's start with groundwater. Everybody knows that the backyard parking lot floods. A few people know it has been flooding for decades. This is an aerial taken from approximately about John Germain Library looking north. This was shortly after 1930, a hurricane, as you can see, towards the north of the gas泡, that the Long Island Railroad tracks were actually removed during the war effort. And as we'll see a little later, this section of town that is to the west of Main Street actually resembles what it did back in the 1700s. Far fewer people know that this area has been flooded for centuries. It was a major factor in how Sad Harbor was settled back in the late 1600s. Sad Harbor was a series of smaller hills and bluffs that sat within marshland and meadow. These hills were terraformed to create the topography that we currently possess. So these, this stretch of arrows essentially becomes Main Street. There is historical reference to a pond, George's Pond, which was presumably at or very close to the location of where this parking lot and this area under consideration for development currently is. This portion has been ever-changing and is extremely liable to flood. It is for this reason that Sad Harbor's backyard, the portion west of Main Street, is always in the state it is, flooding and never dry. Part of our project is to demonstrate what we see today is a part of Sad Harbor's urban DNA and so needs an appropriate corrective. We still see, as you can see here, the hills that were first terraformed to settle this area to the, to the east of Main Street. So this topography is still impacting our lives today. So the next compounding factor is the effect of heavy rainfall. This is an extract from the Village of Sad Harbor's Water Quality Management Study. This was commissioned by the Harvard Committee and prepared by Nelson Pope and Voorhees in 2016. This shows the various watersheds in the village. We're really fortunate that some great data such like, such as this exists for us to build on. Now, zooming into the appropriate, approximately 150-acre watershed that mostly drains into the parking lot, we see the subtle effects. drains into the parking lot, we see the subtle effects of the original topography still at play. Zooming in to this area, we can see that the topography might not be so obvious to you as you walk or drive through town, but this topography is not only draining surface water, it is also pushing subsurface water towards the parking lot. This process is supercharged during the storm where water upwells out of strong drains in this area rather than goes into them. To extend the bathtub analogy that the kids from the Guildhall Teen Arts Council came up with, during such times, it is not just a bathtub. It is a bathtub that is quite literally floating on a pond. If you unplug the stopper, water does not go out, it comes in. The last of the three compounding factors is storm surge. And as Jeff mentioned, this is probably the most being impacted by the proposed development. Again, we are fortunate as a community to have such a robust local news scene. This is because of local reporters like Tyler Vexi, that we have firsthand accounts of what actually happened as Hurricane Sandy came ashore. As you will see, the data we have gathered corroborates our account. This is a flow analysis analyzing the storm surge and localized susceptibility to flooding with the directions of water flow. This is courtesy of Chris Gollinger and the Woods Halt Road that was prepared in May twenty twenty four. This is more visual of what happened. So the first top left hand side is actually along Bridge Street, right where the proposed development is considered. The bottom left hand side is students recording the sandy level in green down below. And what it would take to fill this bathtub in orange above about twenty seven inches higher than what Sandy came in at. And to the bottom right hand side is a drone composite showing where the water actually came in. Tri-State Land Surveying recorded the heights at key locations along Long Island Avenue. So we actually know what height above mean high water mark will result in severe inundation. And for this infographics, I thank Carl Pincher from Ugly Bird Pictures and Dr. Chris Hague for the analysis. So in conclusion, did this exercise result in any useful ideas? Well, this depends upon your perspective. You can take a wait and see approach. We can choose to let the parking lot flood, but at this point, not having a plan is a plan. Or, as the students at the Guildhall Teen Arts Council like to call it, you could give George his pond back and engage with comprehensive planning effort that will address this issue for the generational task that it actually is. This is a community effort, not just with kids, but I can see an equal number of adults in the community have provided their amazing talents to collaborate, the help and to advise. This will truly take a village. Thank you all for your patience and time.
Thank you. I remember there was some other hands. Anyone else want, Susie?
Hello, everyone. My name's Susie Elwood, I'm a resident of Eleven Bridge Street and I'm on the under board over there actually. So it's very important to me. And when I first wrote this letter, which I will have to amend, but Mr. Ellsworth had presented a Zoom document, which was then posted on the website. So I tried to very specifically respond to the different aspects that he named. So this may be a little bit out of date, so I'm going to try to clean it up before I send it. But I guess in general, I'm especially disturbed because the harbor closed condominium is directly across Bridge Street from the proposed project. And given that it would take over, dwell over a year, it would be not only a terrible inconvenience for the whole town, but especially for Bridge Street. Regarding traffic, noise, air and water pollution. So all of these aspects would certainly impact all of us in the village. And in addition, the location that was previously designated as a superfund site, that is a bit scary because there's a discussion in Mr. Ellsworth's document about the removal of a thousand tons of natural material. Now, that could be something I'm misunderstanding, but the creation of erosion would undoubtedly lead to uncovering more hazardous materials as well as adding toxic construction materials to the move. And the depth, I think this has been mentioned, but the depth of the water table on the site question would be. I think others have covered the flooding very substantially. There's also would be a tremendous impact aesthetically and on the historical precedent that we have in this town. It's a beautiful, historic new village and there's been a tremendous amount of effort by various organizations like Zay, Sag Harbor to keep it that way. And this would, this project goes against all of those aesthetic aspects as far as, I mean, we only know the rendering so far, but what it looks like is a completely different sort of, you know, venue, if you call. Okay. Oh, yes. And then there's a conversation in there about the construction workers' cars and trucks that the project would require. The existing roadways would not be adequate, of course. The proposal includes an off-site location to accommodate the enlarged capacity, but I don't know what that would be. I mean, where is that alleged off-site location? What is the plan for that? Where would it be? What is therefore, what would the traffic, how would it all be involved as a, as a fully developed game plan? And then the other thing I just, the other thing is in terms of, in terms of an increase in schools, police, sorry, the increase of population and community service that would require much, some sort of a expansion of schools, police and fire. So these are all things, as I say, other people have done a very eloquent job of mentioning other things, but this is in response to Mr. Ellsworth's document. And I know there's more information that needs to be responded to, but I thank you for the.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you say you're going to send, you're going to amend that as a letter and send it in to us as well?
Yes, but I think that there's more that I haven't included because there's more documents, but absolutely, the board has, the rest of the board have signed it and I'm going to get some more signatures before I submit it.
Thank you for showing up. Thank you. John.
Just a point of clarification, the draft scope is not my document or Nelson Pope and more uses this document.
No, it's, that's why I think this is out of line. It's because it was the full E A F.
Oh, okay. For the, when the positive declaration was issued, requiring all of this.
Yes, and there were various columns, yes, no, yes, no, that, and the variances that would be required. So it's a bit outdated.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. Richard Obrath from eighteen Bridge Street, I'll propose condominiums. I just wanted to address a few issues. I'm a full-time resident along my life. At the time, I was the president of the condo board. And one of the projects we took upon ourselves was to replace the curved water cutoffs on each building. Building number one is directly opposite Eleven Bridge Street. It took four attempts to complete this process due to the level of water. We're slightly elevated higher than Eleven Bridge Street. I believe we're about, if I had to guess, three feet, four feet higher. On all four attempts, there was a groundwater that came in at least three feet below the surface and then we were unable to complete this process until we finally got pumping truck in to pump it out to complete the plumbing. So that's one issue I wanted to bring about. The second issue I wanted to bring about was a letter that one of our homeowners wrote to the D E C on December twenty second, twenty twenty two, of Mr. Douglas McNeil from the D E C. And due to time restraints, I won't read the whole email. I would like to jump to the last sentence that he, this is his sentence, his email. What remains is some contamination deep underneath the site, which is contributing to groundwater contamination. And all the soil in the upper twelve feet was removed and replaced with green film. So it's obvious that there's still contamination at this site. This is from his, his word, his email. This proposed project would affect the Sag Harbor coves. As we all know, that's why everyone loves this area. It's a beautiful pristine area and we want to keep all waters that way. However, by disturbing the land around the coves, it's going to create a disturbance surrounding water bodies. The proposed action will affect the quality of water within downstream of the site Eleven Bridge Street. It's also too important that they require new construction, expanding existing water treatment facilities. This area is known as a flood zone A E. It's defined by a federal emergency management as a one percent risk of flooding annually with a twenty percent, twenty six percent risk of flooding in the course of thirty years. I would also like to do, this gentleman that spoke and the students said that Sag Harbor backyard project is excellent. And I thought everyone's a go on site, we did again, stuff is very important. This proposal is in show contrast to the land use patterns in the proposed projects for aesthetics resource. I just want to say quickly about the traffic. With this projected traffic increase, the capacity of the existing network, daily deliveries and trucking companies, UPS, FedEx, et cetera, to the commercial vendors and new residents would create additional traffic. What must be addressed is an E I S regarding impacts on solid waste. The location of the proposed business, the resident for waste containers, proposed daily waste pickup at all times of the day and night, reported to be directly opposite building one of the harbor closed community on Bridge Street. Waste pickup will result in a disruption of traffic flow to accomplish said pickups posing further traffic congestion and further noise and air pollution, pulling every day and every night. The need for planning foundation for the purpose site and insulation will result in severe noise and vibration that will impact the harbor closed community, the retirement community basically starting construction. This proposed project is inconsistent with the land use and in show contrast to surrounding land use patterns. In addition, steep inconsistent with local land plans or zoning regulations will cause a change in the density of development that is not supported by existing infrastructure will require a new. The proposed project has been consistent with the existing community character and will replace the areas historic importance to our community. Finally, the proposed project is inconsistent with the predominant hall pictures both scale and character of harbor closed condominiums community. In addition to numerous variances that will be required to complete this undertaking. Thanks very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you for coming in. Others that wish to speak to this? Sir?
Hi.
Hello.
My name is Maziar Biruz. I'm in Bivens Sag Harbor Village and I'm an architect also. I live around the corner from this property and there's a lot of talk about the contamination. I should tell you that last year, I tried to plant a cypress tree in my front yard. We dug down about a foot and hit water. And then we continued digging and after three feet, I hit this dark black sludge. And we kept digging and after about five or six feet, we gave up. And we just filled it back up. So two things about that. One, the idea of adding a cistern to absorb the storm water that's generated from this building. That cistern will replace water that's in the ground. So if you add an empty tank into the ground and shove it down, it's just going to push that water that's in there elsewhere. So it's just replacing, that's one. Two, I think as part of that D I S, they should poke the ground with soil tests and test tubes at various locations and go down as deep as possible to find out at what point does that sludge end? How thick is it? It starts at around maybe three, four feet at my yard. I don't know how deep that is. And I think we should ask them to do test soil tests to find out exactly how deep that might be. And if it's really deep, the effect of that during construction is going to be critical. You're going to have a giant gaping hole in the ground and then have to get remedied in different ways. So that's one issue. All of this is predicated upon affordable housing. I mean, I think that's one of the reasons that the applicant has said that this would be a good project for the neighborhood. Forty-four apartments and eight thousand square feet of commercial space will require a half of service staff, people who work in those offices and also people who serve and will service the building itself. So it probably doesn't even give you enough apartments, affordable apartments, to house the people that will be needed to service this apartment. So in terms of affecting the overall need of affordable housing in this area, I feel that either they cannot do that. And if they think that there's somehow they can, I think they should maybe include that in their D I S or show how they're doing that. And lastly, I think you're already doing this, but we shouldn't look at this as a forty percent improvement of a previous application, not in relative terms, but in absolute terms. This is a sixty-two thousand square foot building in potentially, if you look at it from a very broad scope, in potentially the worst place in Sag Harbor you could build a building of this size. So I just want you to look at these absolute terms of the project, not the relative terms of how much it may have been improved from the prior application. That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes. Hello, Marianne.
Hello, John. This is my neighbor. Are you going to speak as a neighbor? Are you going to speak?
As a resident.
As a resident because that, you know, this, this, I don't, I don't think this is coming before the Harbor Committee. I just want to be sure.
Oh, I don't think so.
I don't think so. I'll pop my head, but I have. That is my head. But I'm pretty sure what consists.
Yeah, the Harbor Committee is listed under agencies as L W R P reviewing.
So the issue is obviously if you speak as a neighbor, that's fine, but then you'll have to consider whether you want to recue yourself or quote consistency. You don't come to the other committee. That's the issue. So you may want to think about it.
I had an unintended consequences kind of comment. It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter what you're commenting, it's about your position.
When it comes to L W R P, no one has to refuse by spell if I make a comment here.
It could be asked to. Yeah. Yeah. It would be something we have to explore.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make the comment. I can stir the dust, not that I think it's that valuable, but one of the things that I'm concerned about are the possible unintended consequences here. So say this structure gets built more or less as planned and we have this rather large building there with commercial space. What kind of incentive is that going to be for the current property owners along that side of Main Street to build out the rear of their property to have structures facing this, much like there is in East Hampton? I think you're all aware that all of the parking lot in the back.
I think you're all aware that all of the parking lot in the back of Newtown Lane, I think it is, Main Street, I feel old confused. They're all commercial structures as well. And I'm just wondering whether or not in ten years, whatever that's going to happen here, and what that can do to tap the vitality of our Main Street. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room? There may be people online, but I'm looking at the room at the moment.
I have two hands, raise hands.
Two people online? Let's go for it. Who you got?
Hi, shall we? We continue?
Yes.
Hello.
Yes, Douglas Newby, two forty-four Madison Street, J. Schakka Members of Planning Board. As we've heard this evening, there are several areas concerned that need to be fully addressed in the final scope of the draft DIS, including, in my view, the potential impacts on human health, flooding and stormwater management, traffic and parking, the impact on the character of the village, the village resources, the impact of remediation and construction on the life of the village during those activities, and of course, definition of what workforce housing means. This is no longer actually an affordable housing project according to the application. It's workforce housing, which is not clearly defined. And as Nele pointed out, there are also other alternatives that need to be considered. We will be submitting written comments, so we don't need to try to take down everything I say. But this evening, I wanted to focus on non-contamination, which is obviously something that has come up in several prior comments. My biggest fear about large-scale development in this area of Sag Harbor has always been that it could open up non-contamination that would require expensive remediation beyond the capability of the developer, who would then declare bankruptcy, and we would be left with a large hole full of contaminated water emitting toxic vapors in the center of the village. As a reminder, and again, Nele touched on this earlier, the area west of Main Street was tidal wetland before it was filled in the eighteen thirties, oh, sorry, the eighteen hundreds to create land for industrial use, including railroad marshalling yards, a manufactured gas plant that operated from the late eighteen fifties to nineteen thirty, and lumber and coal storage, all activities that are inherently prone to contamination through spills, leaks, and onsite waste disposal. And we're talking about regulations or unregulated operations, obviously long before anyone even thought of the EPA. Coal char contamination was identified in the nineteen nineties, and after a multi-year investigation, National Grid and the DEC agreed to a remediation plan. However, contamination extended below the bed of the original wetland, so they decided to cap the remaining contamination, which is a perfectly valid and standard practice. And in twenty fourteen, agreed to a site management plan covering the site, which, to be clear, includes both Five Bridge Street, the old blue gas wall lot, and the northern portions of Eleven Bridge Street. The then owner of Eleven Bridge Street, as Jeff mentioned earlier, granted an environmental easement to the people of the United, of the States of New York in perpetuity, which precludes using Eleven Bridge Street for residential purposes. The conditions of the easement run with the land and therefore must have been conveyed to the developer when he purchased the property in late twenty twenty-one. The draft EIS must include a detailed description of this history and the current use restrictions. The draft EIS must also include amendments to these existing agreements required for the proposed project. Such amendments would be to facilitate project development and therefore are connected actions that cannot be segmented in the environmental review process. Currently, National Grid is on the hook for any environmental liabilities. National Grid is deep-pocketed and has lots of expertise, important protections for the village. The draft DIS needs to explain in detail how the developer will provide irrevocable bankruptcy proof surety to ensure that existing or future contamination will be properly remediated. The developer has also submitted a brownfield cleanup program application for remediation of both Seven and Eleven Bridge Street. I will say, I think it's a thirteen thousand page document, so quite understandable, most people haven't read it. The application is deficient in many ways, but the contamination targeted was found in shallow monitoring wells, each less than seven feet deep, that identified soil, groundwater, and vapor contamination comprising volatile and semi-volatile organic compounds and metals, including arsenic. These shallow monitoring wells did not test contamination below the original wetland bed, and most worryingly, in some cases, appear to have found recent contamination of clean fill that was placed since the two thousand eight, two thousand nine remediation plan. This all needs to be addressed in detail in the draft DIS. These would be serious concerns in any environment. In a flood-prone area in the center of a bustling residential and commercial village, the potential impact on residents, businesses, visitors, and the surrounding land and marine environment could be disastrous. Since these and other concerns are complex matters, we will be submitting more details in written comments on the scope of the draft DIS in the next few days, trying to give you guys as much time as possible to absorb them ahead of the deadline later this month. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Who's next to us?
I have Catherine Yon Muzo.
Yes. I'm Catherine Levy. I too live at two forty-four Madison Street. There are many aspects of this project that could have a disastrous impact on this village, in my opinion. None more troubling than the issues many have raised about remediation of toxic contamination. But I'll focus on just three of the other major problems that need to be addressed in the draft EIS. At yesterday's trustee meeting, I was struck by the number of references to major storms. It seems we have one hundred-year events every one hundred days or so. We have to face the reality of rising sea levels and increasing frequency and severity of rain and windstorms. This is a low-lying area that is very vulnerable to flooding, as Nele and others have made clear, both tidal and stormwater. Yet the draft scope does not include these facts, which must be included in the final scope. I'm also extremely concerned about traffic and parking. Traffic in Sag Harbor comprises two groups: Sag Harbor as an origin destination and traffic passing through the village. Their east-west routes are Route one fourteen and the bridge Sag Turnpike to Terreine Avenue. Congestion on these roads on Main Street and increasingly on our side roads is already at crisis levels. The, the EIS needs to address with a comprehensive traffic study the impact of additional residential units and significantly more commercial space on this problem. In terms of parking, the proposed development includes a forty-four-space parking garage, a problematic one, as Maziar mentioned, and repurposing the existing parking at Five Bridge Street currently leads to the village to be dedicated to the proposed development. I would think it would go without saying that repurposing existing parking does not increase parking availability. Therefore, the draft EIS needs to consider the impact on the village of removing ninety-three parking spaces that would otherwise be available to meet current demands. This needs to be in the context of the current acute shortage of parking that is already harming village businesses because prospective customers are unable to find parking. I'd like to close by addressing workforce slash affordable housing. The current proposal is for just sixteen one-bedroom workforce units, two-bedroom market rate units, and approximately eight thousand square feet of commercial retail space. In other words, the affordable housing component is a minor element of this project. The draft EIS needs to clarify the proposed use, define what workforce units mean, how much they will cost, who will be eligible for them, how they will be managed, and describe guarantees that the workforce units remain affordable in perpetuity. And I also, along with my husband, will be submitting more written comments. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else online wishes to speak? And anyone else here in the room that I've missed that wishes to speak? Sir?
Hi, Adam Potter, about myself. So I think what's interesting to me is, and I'll talk about the DIS as well. This is
Let's see his picture.
I'm sorry?
We should be muted.
You, we, please be quiet while Mr. Potter is speaking. So I apologize. Thank you.
So this is the first time that a project has changed so much before it even went to a board. And the reason why I said it is because at the end of the day, I've listened to the public and say, hey, certain things should change. You can't build on these lots because they're historic, whatever the reason is. We changed it many times before it even hit the boards. And I'm going to continue to listen to the public and make sure that we continue to do that. However, tonight, there were a lot of inaccurate statements that were, that were portrayed as facts, and that's just wrong. The second is there were requests for information that are completely outside the scope of the D, of the DEIS. And third is other people asking to hold me to a standard that just doesn't exist under the law. And so what I would ask is, listen, I'm going to work with you guys. I'm going to work with the community like I have done the last two and a half years. I'd ask that you follow the law, which you will do, similar that you've done with other projects, right on Main Street or off Main Street, that were recently done, that are also in a flood zone, that also contribute to the flooding in the, in the back parking lot or in the pond or wherever it may be, and just follow the law. I'll work with you. I'll work with the community like I have worked with the community as I've, as I've done over the last two and a half years. I mean, there's just so many inaccurate statements about all the commercial space being added. We're actually having less commercial space than there is today. So just think about some of those things that were said as portrayed as facts, which are just hard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Hand this up.
I wrote some notes down. Peter Acacella, Fourteenth Hampton Street. I wrote some notes down before I left home, and I wasn't going to read them, but I think now I will. I'd like to take a moment to clarify something. I fear the applicant thinks that this is somehow personal. Well, it is not. We don't know him, nor do we dislike him, but we love our village. To a developer, Sag Harbor is an opportunity. To us, it is our home. A unique place miraculously passed over by time, until recently. Sag Harbor is now hot, and with that comes well-heeled investors and entrepreneurs chopping at the bit, taking advantage of Sag Harbor's appeal with little concern for fallout. There's only so much that shop owners, restaurateurs, now cruise ships can squeeze out of our tiny Main Street. And the effect on our quality of life, those of us who are actual stakeholders in the village, who actually live here in these two square miles, is not a good one. Parking and traffic, as everyone has noted tonight, is a scourge, one which can only worsen with time. The idea of adding to the gridlock by locating a development in the most crowded part of the town defies reason. I leave it to the scientists to address contamination and flooding. Simply put, too many boxes are checked for this plan to make sense. Any suggestion that we are classist or nimby is, in its face, is absurd. Most of us are, or were at one time, New Yorkers. It is impossible to live in that city if one does not welcome all races and social strata. The applicant claims to be passionate about affordable housing. So are we. Build where it makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Last chance. And no one else is online, is that right, Doris? Wonderful. Okay, well.
So you're gonna keep this, you're gonna close the public hearing, but keep it open for written comments until June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four?
Right.
And those comments are going to the village, so technically speaking, they should be submitted by four P M, whenever we
On June twenty-fourth.
June twenty-first.
Twenty-one, June twenty-one. Thank you. So, so there you have it. So we, we, we will be accepting public comments in the written form until June twenty-one, four P M or so at Villachal. Things have to be either emailed or submitted by mail or in person by that time. And at that, with, with nothing else to be said. Anyone else have any comments or questions at the board level? If we're, if we're good, then, and then I suggest I accept a motion to close the public hearing, I think, with the exception of written comment.
Sure, so moved.
Second.
Very good. All is in favor? And that, that's it for the evening. Thank you all for coming. I appreciate your involvement. This is good. Motion to adjourn, please.
Don't move.
All vote in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Complete. Thank you. Thank you, Doris. Bye, Barbara.
Good night, everybody. Have a good night. Night.
Right. Doris?